Good afternoon, welcome to the Board of Education work session for Gurley-Evan School District 6. Today is Monday, May 8th, it's four o'clock and we'll call the meeting to order. Ms. Lemon, will you call the roll for us?
Director Bentley.
Present.
Director McLeston.
Present.
Director Mash.
Present.
Director Matthews.
Present.
Director Norwood.
Present.
Director Kappas.
Present.
Director Sullivan.
Present.
All board members present.
Thank you, Ms. Lemon. First up on our agenda is the calendar review. So if everybody will take a look at their calendars. Obviously, the big thing that's happening is graduations.
Here they come.
Yeah. But we do have a Frontier House breakfast on Wednesday. And farewell to Madison on the 15th. Project Search graduation on the 16th. And then we get into graduations and hopefully that is all spread away. Anything that needs to be on here that's not on here? Please, you do, Ms. Lemon printed this out for us to make sure it is correct that you are scheduled to be where you think you're scheduled to be. Notice the attire for each one of those. Some are business attire, some are regalia. So, moving right along, we're to our curriculum adoptions. Dr. Pilch, I'll let you introduce this for us.
Thank you. I'll introduce Dr. Dattery. So she'll walk you through two different pieces tonight. One is the actual curriculum guides or the curriculum adoptions that will come before you in the board meeting for approval, as well as the anti-bullying curriculum that is really an information item that will come before you tonight. It's a supplemental curriculum, so it does not require board approval. So with that, Dr. Dattery, I'll let you take it away.
Awesome, thank you so much. Dr. Pilch in room four. As Dr. Pilch said, there's a few coming to you tonight for adoption. And I want to just walk through a little bit of the process and some of the background and what's gone into all of this before it's just like it's such a short item and it's a lot of work that comes to you that's in the big backup materials that you got. So we thought we'd share that with you, starting with the AP curriculum adoption. The AP curriculum, you'll meet her tonight if you haven't already met her, Ms. Amanda Creaker. She is AP, our AP coordinator, as well as our AP and our IB. Does a phenomenal job. This is actually something that's come to you before the board a few, you know, now I think, I want to say five years now. We're in our fifth year of our adoption rotation. And this is in keeping with college board and as they refresh and go through that process, then that rolls out to districts. And so we are able, we are able now because of our MLOB overrides, to actually keep up with those refreshes and expectations from the college board. So we're, just feel so fortunate. And our AP teachers are very grateful when they are coming. So the two classes this year are AP English Language and Composition and AP Human Geography. And when we see the total, this is the total, 110, which still isn't, you know, I mean, it's a lot of money, but it's, there are like 400 students that are in AP Human Geography that this touches. So it's one of our largest AP classes. A lot of our freshmen, not solely, but a lot of our freshmen are in this class. And it's a great class for kids to come into and take in their freshman or sophomore year and take that AP class and say, oh yes, you can do this. It's not that scary and get going. So this is an action item that's being brought to you tonight. These are the, this, as I mentioned to you, aligns with college board, their expectations. It does, for the, like honestly, having been here for several years and not until the last five or so years, six years, have we been able to provide the consistency and the resources? It's been a little more, it was prior to that, really very building dependent because our district was able to sometimes do enough for large adoptions and just not our AP forces. So we're grateful for that. And these are our committee members. Just, you'll see it again, but I thought it was worth mentioning, they put hours and hours and hours into this work. They don't just meet once or twice. They need to, they go through what it means, you know, what are the resources, what are, what is it that they're striving for, what is their purpose as a collective team, so they're not doing this push-pull the whole time and arm wrestling over all the different things they want, but really coming to some agreements about what this class needs to look like and what are the best supports. And in this case, we also have a special education teacher, which is wonderful because it's saying, yes, all of our kids need to have access into this curriculum. So let's think about that from a resource standpoint that can then play and support our teachers' instruction. So just worth noting, all of their work and great appreciation for them. So the next one that's coming to you, it's a couple of adoption resources, but it's really all in this K-8 music and PE. I think our elected teachers are over the moon, particularly our PE who've just not had resources for 20 years. It's crazy. But they have written their own curriculum, they have been amazing at putting things together. This is really quite wonderful for them to have resources. Bill Fern is our secondary curriculum coordinator and he also organizes all of our K-12 specials. So he's been doing this work with them, again, hours and hours and hours. I think they came together and went, oh my gosh, what's out there? And to really comb through and say, what do we really need from a curriculum standpoint? We're not talking big equipment. That's a totally different budget. And we work through that every year in kind of rotating and what are their needs and making sure there is, you know, equity among the system with those resources. This is really about the instructional resources and aligning and making sure that that's in alignment with the Colorado academic standards. So it's 79,000 total, again, coming from our MLO budget and because it is core resources, it is an action item. So that's the difference between some of these, like what we adopt and is in alignment with our Colorado academic standards, those are our core resources and that comes to you as a board action item versus supplemental. So that's why this is an action item. Again, like I said, 2003 was the last adoption for PE and then 2014 in music. But 2020 is when the Colorado academic standards came out. And the written curriculum, I will assure you, has aligned all these years. Their written curriculum, their curriculum guides, the things that you adopt at the beginning of the year each year. But the resources have just been dated, particularly where PE is concerned. And so they've really had to draw on other resources in the, over the years, just because we haven't, we haven't done anything. And they haven't asked until more, you know, they said, yes, this would be very helpful for them as professionals. And these are the amazing folks that came together over and over throughout this year. Started, I think, really in December, really getting going, although they had a couple of short meetings prior to that. And it's a really cool thing, in music and PE, we have on the bottom right, district specials leads. So these folks really lead, these are teachers in our system and they provide guidance and support and, you know, direction for their entire department. And so those, these three folks gave additional amount of time to this. And our community consultants on the bottom left, we're very fortunate to have Kathy and Doran Nazari in our community. They are, if you don't know them, but I think you all do, are amazing musicians and incredible educators and have taught many countless students over the years in the area of the arts. And so to have them and their voice and with the music, for the music folks in particular, was very beneficial, just to stay in line with all of that. So we were very fortunate to have them commit to giving us that much time. And then, the third resource that we'll be sharing with you tonight, this is an information item, as Dr. Pilch mentioned, this is a supplemental resource. There are only a few lessons in, at each grade level in elementary and then again in the secondary level that are in this area. However, and so this was, I will say, this was led by Mr. Dagan Andrews, who's in the room. He is our director of curriculum and personalized learning. And because this isn't really a, this is not a content area, we kind of looked around and we were like, well, where does this fall? You know, because this is in alignment with what's in policy and what's in state statute. Well, when you're the director of curriculum, you get to pick up these jobs. So we said, would you please lead this work and really dig in and make sure that we're doing this well and aligning it to policy and to state law. So the total price tag for this is $40,772. That is actually all just elementary because what you'll see tonight, and I didn't break this down, elementary versus secondary, but secondary, it's PBIS with a state resource and it's all, and that's positive behavior intervention support. And that is all, it's free from the state. It's not a, there's not a, it's an open resource. That's probably a better way to say it. It's an open resource from the state. Whereas the elementary resource is actually something you have to purchase from a vendor and that's why we pay for it, but, but open resources, you don't pay for. So it's not a huge price tag, which is wonderful. And like I said, it is an information item. We'll share with you the entire process tonight, but as I mentioned, keep in mind, this is coming to you because this is about state law, 22 to 144. And it does require, as a part of several things that we needed to do, it does require bully prevention curriculum. Now, we could say we had something kind of in place prior, but it did not meet the letter of the law and the expectations, K to 12. And so we really knew, and even what we did have, what we would say was present, was not being followed in every elementary and certainly not in our secondaries, as they really didn't have anything. So this was, it was a good, it was a good, this has been a very good opportunity, let's say, to really dig into this area. So as I mentioned, supplemental, it's only four lessons per grade at the K-5. So it's not extensive, it's just embedded, it's not a, it's not a class, there is not that time, it's just going to be something they either put in, say, to morning meetings or maybe a teacher will say, you know what, we're ahead in our social studies unit, we're going to put this lesson in here and we're going to kind of time that out and just when those are appropriate. Four lessons per grade level at K-5, and then they can cycle back. Guys, remember, boys and girls, you know, we need to look back and remember some of these lessons. So they might revisit some of those at their particular grade levels, but it's not going to be lessons beyond that. And as you can also see, four lessons each in the middle of the school. So again, they have different opportunities to do that, whether it's their advisement or their, you know, homeroom times, things like that, that they can figure out at the school and they'll determine that.
Stacy?
Yes.
Just go back.
You bet.
So is it four lessons per grade each in middle and high school?
Yeah, it is.
Yep, did you? Go ahead.
Yeah, so there are two lessons and they're the same lessons for middle school and then again repeated at high school. But we're going to do work to update the ones for high school on those kids that go through, because the same lessons will just be updated.
Same content idea.
Videos and things like that to go along with them, but it's the same strategy.
Okay. Yeah. And then these are the folks that came together to help come alongside Mr. Andrews in this work. So we had a few principals, we had a few counselors, we had a couple of teachers at each of these levels as well. And in this case, again, not, it's just not something that we do in every one of our adoptions, but again, being a part of the state requirement, including a parent in this one, was very important to us as well. So this is one of our parents from our district accountability committee who said that she would, Jessica Welch, who would be a part of this committee as well. So this, tonight, Dagan will walk through the process with you as it was approved. Supplemental resources are approved with the district curriculum council with all of those. So they have gone through this, but we want to be able to share with you all of the resources and the process and just kind of make sure that you as a board are aware that this is going to be implemented at the start of this coming school year.
So Stacy, so you, the PBIS, it's still in place in some of all elementary schools as well?
Yes, this is just the bully prevention curriculum part of it. But no, PBIS, system-wide, and really what would, embedding that really inside of an MTSS system. I know it seems a little confusing when they said PBIS is the curriculum. It's really just the curriculum at that secondary level for that bully prevention. But the, I mean, that is such a much bigger acronym for so many things, right? Exactly. I thought they made that a little more confusing than they probably should have, but they didn't ask. Yeah. So that's really what we're bringing to you this evening. I take any other questions you might have or a few other wonders, we just didn't want to, we thought, there's a lot that's coming tonight and it would be better to give you just a little bit of a chance to digest that in the work session prior to the business meeting.
Any questions, Gads?
I guess I'm still trying to wrap my head around it completely. So, so the supplemental curriculum will be four lessons per grade in K through five because they don't have that state program, the PBIS program that high school has.
No, it's, it's just a different curriculum. It'll be, it's called Second Step. So we're bringing that tonight to share with you. And it actually aligns with the curriculum that's already in our elementary schools. But these are four additional lessons on just bully prevention at each of the elementary grades. Kindergarten, very, you know, specific to what, five-year-olds versus an 11-year-old, right, at the fourth or fifth grades. So each grade has its own set of four lessons.
Okay, and then that ends at fifth grade?
And that ends at fifth grade for Second Step.
And then starting in sixth grade?
It's PBIS.
It's PBIS. And how does that look just in comparison to these like four, you know, discrete lessons?
So that's what Mr. Andrews was talking about with those two lessons.
So there are two sets of lessons for one, one grade level, so they roll up in sixth grade and seventh grade. And then from there, those will be repeated again in high school. So there are three sets of lessons with one follow-up lesson. And so they're the same, but then as students roll up, that's what I was talking about. Then those will be updated with the videos, but the strategies are the same about how you stop somebody who's in the process of bullying. How do you identify, how do bystanders respond to bullying? And then how, how do you actually go about reporting bullying when it happens? So that's the focus of those lessons.
And then that's similarly kind of embedded, right? It's not like a class, it's just embedded in.
Embedded in, it is not a class.
In high schools.
So I'm just curious if, about the understanding of PBIS. It's a, I don't know, do you understand what PBIS is?
I forget if you guys talked about it a little bit in the supporting, support our systems kind of stuff or systems of support.
I don't know, maybe we just need a little more.
Positive.
PBIS is really the behavior, you know, that's the positive behavior intervention support that you're putting in place as a part of an MTSS or that multi-tiered systems of support, which is what you just talked about, right? So it's all encompassing when you think all these multi-tier, these systems that we want to put in place, where the kids are successful academically and behaviorally, attendance, all of the things that you want to look at. This, what we're talking about here, is just that leg of behavior and very specific, specifically of bully prevention and this teaching students the strategies. And how to identify and how to react and report in any of those bullying, you know, in the situation where bullying is occurring. So again, PBIS, the B is all about behavior and what we're, what we're doing to support students to achieve desired behaviors so that they are successful in school, part of a bigger system. Does that help?
I think you answered my question.
Right.
So it sounds like four lessons in each grade, up until fifth grade, and then two lessons.
Yep.
And then two, and then those get repeated as they go forward.
Kind of build on each other.
Yeah.
Any other questions? About these or AP Lang? Is it Lang &amp; Comp that we're doing?
Uh huh, it's Lang &amp; Comp is one class and then the other is the AP Human Geography.
And HUGS, yeah. Cool. Any other questions?
I just have a question, like how often are these curriculums updated by the industry, I guess? Like, we're maybe updating them every five?
Five to seven years is really typical industry standard.
Okay.
Yeah. And I believe state statute, our academic standards are reviewed at the state level every five to seven years as well. So that just is kind of that typical. Well, we, go ahead, we're going to.
But the college board may be putting out updates more regularly than that on, you know, tweaks to their recommended curriculum or materials they're recommending, you know, changing, for example, in Lang &amp; Comp, changing suggested novels, those kinds of things.
And when we purchase a curriculum, is it like with your phone where you get some free updates?
Every vendor is a little different in terms of how they'll negotiate what is free and what is, you know, ongoing and what gets updated and, yeah, what we have access to. But yeah, typically, anything that's online, we'll purchase so that our teachers have access to that over the duration of the use of those resources. That's usually pretty standard anymore. Well, I appreciate all of your questions and thoughts and, and support for teachers. I do. I'll be happy if something.
I won't be in the business meeting, so please thank those teachers who serve all, I mean, I know it directly impacts their work, right? Those are our human geography teachers and Lang &amp; Comp and teachers, but, but yeah, thank them for taking the extra time.
Thank you.
Take us good curriculum.
Appreciate you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Stacy.
Next on the agenda is the appeal process debrief. Well, Dr. Pilch is there. Are you introducing that, Mr. Foll, introducing this for us?
I think, well, so, yes, I will start and I'm going to pass it to Mr. Foll a little bit. So as you and Terry and I visited after the last book review appeal and prior to this meeting, I think the three of us felt like it'd be useful to hear from each board member on just kind of how you, you know, what you thought about the process, any feedback you have for future appeals. We have had, we do have appeals on this next book, the Real Life Diary of.
Absolutely True Diary.
Oh, yeah, The Absolutely True Diary of a Part-Time Indian is the next book and we do have appeals on it already. So the board will likely make a decision on that appeal at the next meeting in two weeks. And then the committee right now is, they are reviewing Kite Runner right now. They've already completed. They've already completed Extremely Close and Incredibly Loud.
Extremely Loud.
Extremely Loud and Incredibly Close. They've completed and have, will be providing me with a recommendation any day now, and then I will provide a recommendation once I see their review, which will go to you all as well. So, and then we're going to pause after those two books, we'll pause through the summer, and the committee will take off for a while, and then we'll come back to look at the other appeals as we come back together next fall. So knowing that, we thought it would be helpful, I think the three of us thought it would be helpful, to have some conversation, just open dialogue around, you know, any recommendations that you all have as we go forward on the appeals or the format, those kinds of things. It's really important that we're not making a decision here in the work session because we can't make decisions in work sessions. We, so it's really just to hear from each of you, and then board leadership will need to decide going forward before the next meeting. But that's where I'd like Nate to take over.
Yeah, so I think this is a good opportunity for y'all to have a discussion about kind of your thoughts about the book Appeal Process and how that hearing went, and just kind of share your opinions regarding kind of that appeal hearing. You know, if you do decide to take any action regarding the appeal hearing, I would suggest either the board president when setting the agenda kind of makes that decision, or you make a motion for a hearing or things of that nature at the next hearing, because that's when the Absolutely True Diary of a Part-Time Indian appeal will be heard. The board does have the authority to not hold a hearing pursuant to the board policy. You can just take those appeals that you received kind of into consideration. You have the opportunity to read the appeals on the record. We can also post the appeals publicly so that there is public notice surrounding the appeals and kind of what was stated in those appeals specifically. So just the board kind of has some discretion in terms of how it would like to review any future books if it chooses to not kind of have the hearing that it had at the last board meeting. Again, if you have any questions kind of regarding the legality about policies or just kind of about what your duty is, I'm here to support you in that right now. But again, this is really just an opportunity for you all to just discuss about that last hearing and your thoughts kind of moving forward.
Thank you, Mr. Foll. So, want to hear from you guys? Ms. Sullivan, why don't you lead off for us?
Well, I guess I just have a kind of more of a sidebar question, because I get asked quite often as to who's on the book committee, and I don't even know who that is myself, but why are we keeping that away from the public when we are always speaking of transparency?
Yeah, I can answer, answer that. We're not making that public because we think people will potentially be targeted, right? People on the, on the committee.
The committee does change. The committee that's reviewing this third book now is not exactly the same as the committees that reviewed the first two books. As someone goes off, because they're maybe not available, you know, for the next four weeks or six weeks, whatever it takes to review it, then Mr. Tullow works to identify a person to take that, that person's place. So the committee has changed a little bit with each book. But we have not published who the committee is. I, we do, you know, we, we just have not, based on really wanting to protect their privacy if possible.
And I will say that the book committee is really an advisory committee for the superintendent, because ultimately the superintendent has the decision power of whether or not to uphold or reject the committee's decision. It's not a board delegated committee, it's a superintendent's delegated committee. So rules like the open meetings law and things of that nature wouldn't apply to this particular committee because it's not a board delegated committee pursuant to the open meetings law.
And we can have our, our complainants can go to that, they're invited to the committee meeting, correct?
The first meeting of, the first meeting for that book, complainants may attend and provide testimony about their complaint.
Are they able to attend that whole meeting, or are they only able to come for comments?
No, they come in on Zoom to provide comment and then answer questions if the committee has any questions of them. We've had very little participation for the books. The first book, we had no participation. This last book, I understand we had one participant or two?
There were two participants.
Two participants.
For Kite Runner.
How are we advertising that to let people?
It's all on the website where all that book review information is, yeah. Yeah, if you haven't gone in and looked at that page, it's, you go into departments, you go into academic achievement, and then you can go into book review and complaints, I think it is, and you can, you know, we're updating that regularly, where we are in the process and when the committee's meeting, when they expect to have a decision, and how to sign up for public comment at the committee meeting, those kinds of things.
Any other thoughts, Ms. Sullivan?
Nope, not right now.
Right. Mr. Nowitzki?
How often, I guess I have a question, how often do the book committees meet? Do they just meet and read the book together? Is that what they do and discuss it or?
So they have.
I'm confused on the whole book committee process.
Okay, they have an initial meeting with the committee that Nate, where Nate provides some, some legal opinion and advice, and Wes lays out the process for the review. It's at that first meeting where they, they hear from the complainants if they choose to come in or hear for advocates. I mean, we have had advocates send in written comment to the committee as well. It's at that first meeting, they actually receive the initial complaint that was filed, and then they take a two-week break and to read the book about, is that correct? And then they meet again for the next three nights typically, one night a week for the next three weeks typically to reach a recommendation then that comes to me. And then after Wes writes that recommendation up, he sends it out to the committee electronically for additional feedback. Should they have additional feedback on that recommendation in case he missed something or got something inaccurate, they have an opportunity to clarify that. And then, and then the recommendation comes to me. I, in the meantime, am reading the books as well, so I, you know, I will have read the book by the time the recommendation gets to me, and then I make a recommendation that is that written recommendation that, that you all received. Does that help?
It does.
And I will add that on the committee's report and recommendation that's published on the website, it does kind of state every time that they met for that particular book. And that's right at the top of their written recommendation for superintendent, so you can see kind of the dates and times that they met for each book.
Yeah, so as you, if you go back to that first recommendation that I sent to you all, or you wait for this next one, it really describes the process again there and when they met and, you know, how many times they met to reach their decision that they reached, and then also describes, you know, their reasoning for their recommendation.
And that's done as, is Wes like the moderator?
He's a facilitator, yes.
And so then the rest of them give him their suggestions, and they say, this is what we want to do, and then they vote on it as a majority?
So they don't, yeah, they don't vote by majority, they keep working the process until they reach consensus. And so that's why I say do for more meetings until they, but you know, we, that's the model we use when we make big decisions in the district is a consensus model, and so they just keep working it until they reach a consensus as a committee. Majority rules would be easy, right? A vote's easy to do. Reaching consensus is a lot harder work.
Any other questions?
I'm good, thank you.
Ms. Mash?
I think that the appeal process is great as long as everyone is willing to participate. So Ms. Robin Howard was very respectful, we had a good conversation, we were able to ask her questions. One of the other complainants was not willing to participate in that way, so then that was not helpful or useful at all. So, and then folks who cannot come, I think that they could be able to submit further discussion in writing that either we read or Ms. Lemon reads to us, but I don't think anyone should be able to speak on their behalf. So, yeah, I think, I think all in all, it's, it's a great process, and I've enjoyed reading all of these books. I'm about halfway done with the whole list.
Any other questions or comments, Ms. Mash? Mr. Bentley?
Oh yeah, I agree. I think we need to keep kind of how it was, it's just a little frustrating, a couple of the, I mean, it didn't, we didn't get a lot of substance. I don't think like I gained personally much more out of the comments than what we read in their appeals, but I don't think that it would be, I don't think it'd sit right with me if we deleted their, their ability to speak to us as a board. So I'm okay with the way it went, you know, even with the disruptive nature of a couple of things. I do agree with Natalie though, the reading somebody else's comment kind of went awry. So I agree, maybe a district representative or Zoom, Zoom in or something instead of just letting whoever they choose or delegate to read for them. Other than that, it was, it is what it is. It's appeals process, so.
Dr. Campos Spitsi?
So yeah, I would agree with both with what Director Mash and Director Bentley just said, that I think it went well overall. I agree with, with Director Bentley that I, I think we should hear the complainants one more time and have a chance to do a bit of question and answer. And also agree with them that I, I don't think, I think if somebody can't make it, that there shouldn't be somebody just delegated to, to represent them. I think they should maybe have it as a priority to try to make it to that type of appeal meeting.
Anything further?
Nope.
Brenda? Ms. Bass?
Well, initially I wasn't sure that, and maybe it was just because of the situation, but I didn't really feel like there was much value added to the appeals process, the hearing part of it. I appreciate the appeals that we get and we're able to see that, but I, I can see that if we're going to give people the opportunity to actually be able to answer questions, which I think in, in some cases was valuable with Ms. Howard, I think that was valuable. I, I don't know that we necessarily need to provide it, the accommodation of a Zoom. I think I agree with Brenda that, I mean, we know that if we're going to be doing the appeal on a certain day, and it doesn't take that much time to be able to come if you want to do the appeal yourself or be part of that hearing yourself. But I agree, it, it is the process. I think it's a good process, I'm glad we have it, and, yeah, I think just with some making sure that people understand it's important for them to be here, and we do want to have the opportunity to engage and ask questions and answer questions, but, yeah, I'd say, I guess try it again.
I don't know that I have too much more to, to add to what's been said. I thought that the process that we designed was good. I think going forward, I would like to see how we could shorten that a little bit, just, we took about an hour, and we have about, I don't know, how many more books potentially would we do? I mean, we, you know, we're, we're spending roughly 500 man-hours, we spent roughly 500 man-hours on, on that book, district, district time. And so for our board meeting purposes, I would, I would love to figure out a way for us to streamline that. And it was our first one, so I do think some of, some of the things that we said was for educating the public about what we were doing, and we won't, as we, the further along we go, the less we will have to do that. I think we will, we will get better at even our own comments and keeping those brief like this, and the particular things that, that we're looking for. And so, yeah, I think if we can find a way to streamline the process a little bit, that would be, be my chief recommendation going forward. So we get, we're not spending quite so much time, and we will be doing this once a month or every other month or, you know, just depending on when our committee can, can get together for, for the next year. So, so if we can not make this the dominant thing in our meetings, that it, that it takes up so much of our meeting time, I would love for us to try to, try to get there. So we'll, we'll try to tweak what the process and tweak that, but I appreciate your, your comments, unless I don't. Anybody need to respond to something that someone else said?
Have you all received a copy of An Absolutely True Diary of a Part-Time Indian?
We have.
I just, I don't know where this comment lands, but I'd noticed that one of the appeals for the Absolutely True Diary of a Part-Time Indian is virtually the exact same appeal as for Beloved. Same verbiage, same four points. So again, I don't know if that adds anything to the conversation, if that's going to be the same complaint for every single book without the person having read it. It's not really valuable information.
It is disappointing that none of our complainants, opponents actually read the book, but, but I mean, that's, that's the complaint, so we'll deal with it when it comes up.
And I just really want to encourage you all to read through the committee's written rationale, recommendation for why they kind of reached the decision that they did. I think that that will help with the board in addition to the appeals that you receive so that the board can make a well-rounded decision, because again, its motivations are really important for if we're going to be doing any kind of restrictions on any new particular book. So I just really want to encourage you all, and I will provide you all with that information kind of like I did with Beloved as well, so.
Is that information available on the website now, though?
It is, yeah.
So we have access.
Anything further, guys?
Just wondered if our student representatives had anything they would like to add?
Yeah, thanks, Dr. Pilch.
Yeah.
And you guys weren't there, I should point out for everyone, you were not the, oh, sorry, Richard was there.
Yeah, I wasn't.
Tommy wasn't there, Julie was there.
I was watching it online.
I believe I was here for the first book hearing.
You were, sorry.
Which was Beloved, and I think it did go pretty well, although it was long, and I agree with what you said, Mr. Matthews, that maybe there could be a way to maybe shorten it down and keep comments short, because it was a little bit back and forth here and there, but yeah, that's just from my perspective.
I was watching it online because I got nothing else to do. So I want to know is, I personally, I think the person should come up and read what they wanted to read is having someone else there speaking for them. I thought that was a little not right. I think they, the person who wrote it should come here, and if they're not timed, they should just come back another day, another time and support their opinions about the, on their own, about the book, yeah.
Thank you, Tommy. Thank you, Richard. Anything else, guys? Anything further comments about the process? Again, we can tweak it as we go, right? It's not, not set in stone, we can figure out what, I'm sure, by the end, we will have a really streamlined process. All right, well, next up is our legislative updates.
My stapler's a little funny, so watch the edges on the end, it's bending outward instead of inward, so watch your fingers. And I apologize earlier, thank you members of the board, Dr. Pilch, my name is Nate Vaughn, legal counsel for the school district. This is our legislative update for today. I did provide you with some information in E-week, last week, covering these four bills that we're going to be talking about. There's also some information on the School Finance Act. I will. I will say that Ms. Megan Sponsler, our chief financial officer, is unavailable today, so I will do my best to stumble my way through the School Finance Act and kind of the big picture, kind of broad-sweeping brush of what came with that. But I did want to talk about a couple of these bills. And just so you know, today was the last day for the general assembly, so everything that you're seeing in front of you was passed. These bills all came about either over the weekend or today specifically. They were passed. And so there were some kind of questions and concerns about kind of a few of these bills, and so I just kind of wanted to talk about them briefly with you, just talk about what we're going to be doing to kind of prepare, to make sure that we are in line with the law kind of moving forward. So please stop me if you have any questions. There is kind of a lot to unpack, especially with Senate Bill 286, I believe, the, or 296 to Preventing Harassment and Discrimination in Schools bill. But to begin, we're going to talk about the Expulsion Hearing Officer bill. So that was really a watered-down version of House Bill 1109. So since this bill's been passed, it's just going to require a number of changes to our school expulsion hearing process. First and foremost, that school districts are now going to have to prove by a preponderance of the evidence standard that a student violated both state law and school district's policy if they are in an expulsion hearing. So there's a number of provisions under the expulsion law for what could constitute a violation of state law, you know, such things as possession of a deadly weapon, use or sale of drugs, things of that nature. The district would have to prove by a preponderance of the evidence that that student did in fact violate state law as well as board policy. And so it's going to act a little bit more like a criminal hearing, where we're going to have to kind of prove evidence, and the hearing officer is going to need to take that information when they are making their kind of written findings and recommendations. There is a records provision under this bill that we have to provide records within two days of an expulsion hearing. If we get information between two days and the expulsion hearing, we just need to immediately provide that information, so there's no delay in the hearing. I will say at least, given our current policy on expulsions, that's not going to change anything. We are kind of already providing all that information within five days or as soon as reasonably possible. So there's not a whole lot of changes when it comes to kind of this records provision process. There is provisions to the timeline for the written report. Again, here in District 6, we actually hire a third-party hearing officer. I know a lot of school districts actually have a school administrator or somebody else conduct their hearings, but in our case, we do have an expulsion's hearing officer who does provide those findings and recommendation to the superintendent, and then the superintendent then makes a decision based on those findings and recommendations. There's a number of factors that must be considered now by the hearing officer, and those are all found under 2233-106-1.2. And those are things like age of the student, any disciplinary history of that student, whether or not that student has differing abilities, the seriousness of the violation conducted by that student, whether or not that conduct threatened the safety of students or staff, and whether or not any lesser interventions were appropriate in lieu of an expulsion. So those are just things that need to go into the written report now. We're already providing a lot of this information, but we'll make sure that the hearing officer's report is kind of filled out to include all this, so that the superintendent can ultimately render a decision. There is also an appeal process. There were a couple of changes made to whether or not a student can appeal and when they can appeal the superintendent's decision to the Board of Education. Then you'd be taking on that quasi-judicial role if there was an appeal made to you, and you would essentially be acting as kind of a court of appeals, taking in all the facts and circumstances based on the hearing officer's recommendation and the superintendent's decision on whether or not to expel a student. There's some addition of conflict of interest standards, so a hearing officer cannot have a conflict of interest. Part of that conflict of interest standard is whether or not the hearing officer took a training on implicit bias and things of that nature. Again, we hire a third party to do our expulsion hearings, so I don't think we're really going to run into any issues with that. I would say the big takeaway from this new law is the addition of a hearing officer training requirements. Those can occur virtually, it's an annual training, it's five hours long, so we're going to have to figure out some way to contract with our hearing officer on how they will ultimately be taking that training and who's going to be paying for that training. If the hearing officer doesn't take that training, then we are just kind of per se in violation of the law. So any hearing officer must take that five-hour training. They're going to go over things like child and adolescent brain development, restorative justice practices, alternatives to expulsion, trauma-informed practices, again, conflict and bias and discipline, suspension and expulsion, and then compliance with the IDEA Section 504, the Family Educational Rights and Privacy Act, also known as FERPA, school attendance laws, and the Exceptional Children's Act. There will be a number of policy changes that we're going to have to be implementing. Sometime next year, we'll be implementing those policy changes, essentially to include everything I just said regarding records and the written requirements and what must go into kind of the appeal. And then the last piece that's kind of key here is there is now an opportunity for judicial review. So if a student or their parents disagree with the board's finding, they appeal it up to the board, they can now actually go to a court and take it under court judicial review proceedings to determine whether or not the school district violated state law in rendering a decision about an expulsion. That didn't exist in law now, so it's possible that expulsion decision could make its way all the way to a court, which, quite frankly, would be a little bit interesting to see from an attorney's perspective. I understand from a board and a school district's perspective, that's not as interesting. So do we have any questions on kind of that bill?
Any questions, guys?
I have one that's not related, but is related. I guess, what are the services that are provided? Because legally, we're still accountable for these students when they're expelled, correct? Has that changed the process, or is it still like a homeschool-based?
This has, this bill does not change any of that, I don't believe, what we currently do. And so we do still offer educational services on any expelled student. We either do that through online, the online academy at times, Schoology, or is it Edu?
Edgenuity.
Edgenuity, thank you, not Schoology, more Edgenuity. And also then through the Day Reporting Center at times as well. So sometimes they will get their educate, we'll provide the materials to Day Reporting Center, and they'll actually access their schoolwork there. So, yes, we do continue to provide educational services. Sometimes it's a homebound teacher. It, you know, really just depends on the circumstances and the student's needs. If a student is on an IP, which is rarely do we expel students who are on IPs, but if we do, then there's often a homebound teacher involved in that case.
Thank you.
I think the big change here is really the legwork that's going to have to occur on the front end of any proposed expulsion, and then, of course, the training of our hearing officer, which we're pretty confident he will willingly participate in that.
What is our annual average of expulsions?
I'd have to pull it to say average. I mean, I can certainly get you all that, the numbers of expelled students. We're going to be providing those to you as well. Anytime one comes forward, you'll receive those, you know, not identifying the student by name, but the age of the student and the reason for the expulsion and the school.
Thank you for those questions. The next bill is House Bill 231259. This is that open-meetings executive sessions law. Previously, there was kind of this opportunity to cure. So if a local public body violated an executive session, you would have some time to cure that violation before a lawsuit was commenced. In this particular case.
Sure.
Chief Gates hates this stuff. So in the Senate, there was a strike below. They essentially got rid of the entire bill, and they only left language removing the ability for a pro se plaintiff to collect attorney's fees. So that opportunity to cure no longer exists in this. So if we do violate an executive session, we don't have any opportunity to cure. Somebody can immediately bring a lawsuit. But if somebody is acting as a pro se plaintiff, they can't collect their own attorney's fees. And this is really addressing a couple of attorneys in the state who were bringing executive session violations as pro se plaintiffs, and then they were collecting their own attorney's fees, making quite a bit of money from doing that. So this is essentially just removing that ability to collect attorney's fees, and that's all this bill kind of operates to do.
So this fixed our friend, Matt Roan. Yes?
I'm not going to name names, but yes, there were some attorneys in the state.
Sorry. I apologize. But this is a remedy to attorneys in the state who might have been filing these cases just to make attorney fees off of school districts.
Well, just any local public bodies.
Yeah, any public body.
Yeah, bringing it against state and local entities, including local public school districts. So the next bill that I want to talk about a little bit in greater detail is Senate Bill 23296. This bill passed today. There were a number of amendments that were received over the weekend, I believe, as of yesterday regarding this bill. So I haven't been able to kind of fully vet and understand what this bill does, but essentially, it kind of creates what are known as additional and complementary requirements for Title IX complaints. So we already have Title IX. We already have sexual harassment discrimination under Title IX. We already have a process created by the Title IX federal laws and regulations for how schools are to address Title IX violations. This bill just kind of provides a complementary state law that goes with Title IX, but it actually expands that definition. So if a case were to be brought under Title IX, they're saying this is sexual harassment under Title IX right now, if we determine that it doesn't meet the definition of Title IX, we kick it out to a different process. There could still be disciplining consequences for certain behavior, but it doesn't kind of fall under any specific law. Now, there is a new law that even if it doesn't meet the definition of Title IX, it could meet this new state law, which is the Prevention of Harassment and Discrimination in Schools. So there is some issues, because there's a definition now of what is harassment or discrimination under state law, under Colorado law. And if you look to the document I provided, that's under C1A, that's the definition of what harassment or discrimination now reads. And these apply specifically to schools and school districts. So that'd be 3C1A. The issue is, right now, under Title IX, for it to be Title IX sexual harassment discrimination, that conduct must be severe and pervasive in order to meet the definition of Title IX. There's also quid pro quo or sexual assault as defined by the clarity laws. But here, it doesn't need to be severe or pervasive, assuming some of the statutory requirements are met. So there's a number of statutory requirements for when certain conduct doesn't need to be severe or pervasive to be considered harassment or discrimination under Colorado law. In that case, we take it under a totality of circumstances test, where we're looking at things like the frequency of the conduct, the number of individuals involved, the type of nature of the conduct, the duration, where did the conduct occur, whether or not that conduct resulted in a threatened action, if there was a power imbalance or power difference between the two individuals, any use of racial epithets, slurs, or other conduct or communication that is humiliating or degrading to a particular individual, if that conduct reflects any specific stereotypes, and whether or not there is an act of physical violence in addition to that conduct. So this is going to require a number of policy changes. Right now, we have board policy ACR-1, which sets forth our non-discrimination policy. So, again, I'll be working with our Title IX coordinator and compliance officer on making revisions to that policy to ensure that we are in line with this new law. I'm sure that Casby's also going to have a number of recommended policies. It's possible that they'll just come out with a new policy altogether. It is yet to be seen. I look through ACR-1. We're already kind of doing a lot of what this law requires, but, again, it just kind of changes that definition. There's some notice and posting requirements for when this law gets enacted, we need to start posting at schools and on our website. How can you file a complaint? Here are the people that you can talk to. There's also inclusion of supportive measures. So in case you're curious, under Title IX, when there is a complaint of sexual harassment, the school district needs to provide what are known as supportive measures to the student, which are just kind of non-disciplinary supports that a school can provide, such as counseling, mental health services, things of that nature, a no-contact order, for example, could be considered a supportive measure. And so now, not only under Title IX do we need to provide this, but under any complaint of harassment or discrimination, we need to provide supportive measures to those students. We need to retain records on any complaints for up to seven years. So, again, there's just a number of changes that we're going to be having to make, as well as an entirely new process for addressing claims of discrimination or harassment in our schools. This is pretty significant. It was introduced on April 21st, and it moved through both the House and Senate pretty quickly. I think the last board meeting was sometime around then. So I know Casby and Casey kind of worked on a number of amendments, but it kind of just moved like a train and just was ultimately passed with a number of amendments with it. So, you know, I think that these are things that we can certainly work on, but it's going to take a lot of work to get ready and up to speed, as well as some training that we're going to have to do with all staff in addressing harassment and discrimination in our schools. Any questions or comments on that?
Nate, is there a timeline by when we have to have done all of that? Do we have to do it for next school year, or?
So I believe that there needs to be training, the written policy needs to be by July 1st of 2024.
So we have a year.
And then, yes. And then training needs to be done by July 1st of 2024. And that's for all school staff and each new employee. And then you'll have to take that training every three years.
Okay. So it'll probably be something similar to our child abuse and reporting training?
Right. I think that'd probably make the most sense. And we could do it annually or every three years, just kind of depending on how we want to track that.
Okay.
The next bill is Senate Bill 23286. This is Public Access to Governmental Records. So this bill just kind of made a few, I would say, insubstantial changes to QARA. So as it stands right now, if we are to provide a digital record to somebody, we must provide it in a searchable format. I will say that if it's already in a searchable format, we are providing that to folks anyways. We're not kind of making it impossible for folks to review digital records that we're receiving. It strips the ability for governmental entities to charge a per-page fee for digital records. We don't provide per-page fees for digital records. We'll be providing those for printed records. It still allows for, if it takes a certain amount of time to prepare a QARA request, we can still do things like that and then charge fees for preparing QARA requests. I will say the one piece is if somebody were to provide their name and their address and their telephone number to a government official, such as you all, then we would be able to redact that information if it's for future communications, so we're not just releasing folks' addresses and telephone numbers. And then we can also provide electronic payments, which, again, we're actually already doing right now. If folks want to pay by credit card, we have a process for invoicing folks who want to pay by credit card instead of paying by cash or a check. Any questions on that? Okay, so the last thing to talk about is the School Finance Act. That was signed officially yesterday on May 7th. They waited until the second, the last day of the general assembly to pass the School Finance Act. That's Senate Bill 23287. Just a couple of big pieces, again, with Ms. Sponsler at, I'm going to do my best to try to explain some of these things. I will say that the School Finance Act was really beneficial this year. There's a lot of good reasons to be excited about the School Finance Act and what's kind of moving forward for education funding in the state of Colorado. So there was a $665 million increase in total program funding statewide. They increased the base per pupil funding rate, $598.25. That accounts for an 8% inflation increase. And then they reduced the budget stabilization factor by $180 million. So previously, it was $321 million, and now it's down to $141 million. And then as part of the School Finance Act, they actually included language that they're going to eliminate the budget stabilization factor altogether by next year, which is really exciting. They're going to finally, fully fund public education, which is just really exciting and great. There's a set aside for $30 million for rural school districts. 55% of that will be going to rural school districts. 45% will be going to small rural districts. I bring that up because they've been talking about adjusting kind of the formula to include rural districts as one factor under the School Finance formula. And speaking with Ms. Sponsler, I know that it can be challenging for a formula to address whether or not a school is rural. So really what they're doing is they're just appropriating additional money specifically to rural school districts, who we know struggle with education funding, at least at the local level. They're going to be providing additional $10 million for preschool, special education funding, and then they're going to be delaying the implementation of a new at-risk factor. We know that that at-risk factor was going to be introduced for next year, but they're going to delay that, because they're going to do some testing on kind of how to roll out the new at-risk. on kind of how to roll out the new at-risk factor. There were some issues with kind of cost of living increases. Some school districts had some issue with things like cost of living. And so, they're going to do some testing next year, and then they're going to fully roll out the at-risk factor during the 2024, 2025 fiscal year. Another kind of interesting piece is they're allocating $300,000 to reimburse schools for expenses related to replacing an American Indian mascot. We actually were one of those school districts that had that with the Shoshin Thunderbirds. And that, last year, we changed the Thunderbird mascot to the, I'm so sorry, I forgot it.
Sparrowhawks.
Sparrowhawks, thank you. And so, you know, if there was any costs associated with painting, or adjusting, or updating signs, things of that nature, we could realistically submit invoices to the district, and they would reimburse us for costs associated with those changes. I'm not sure whether or not that's substantial, but that was a specific provision included. The last couple of pieces here is they created a task force to examine Colorado's public school financing system. Just from experience, I can't say that I'm super excited about them creating a task force. Nothing ever seems to work out. From these task forces, they spend a lot of time talking about changes, and then no changes are really made, but you never know. Maybe this one will result in some changes to the school finance formula. And then, specifically for D6, and again, I wish I had Ms. Sponsor here to explain this, but from what I saw from the fiscal note associated to the School Finance Act is it's going to be a $215 per pupil increase from the state. That doesn't mean that, based on our MLO and our local kind of funds that our per pupil funding is going to go up as well, probably closer to that $598 increase. And then, that'll be about $4.7 million total from the state that we're going to be receiving for next year, given kind of these changes to the School Finance Act. So, that's a really good thing. I would say a lot of positives came from this. And I will take any questions, or maybe Dr. Pillage can support me on any questions with that.
So, can you talk about the $1 million for gifted and talented universal screening? I'm just curious about that allocation.
Yeah, so I think it goes up to 2027 is the purpose of that. So, if you have a student who needs to do screenings for gifted and talented, then this provision is going to provide for those universal screenings. And so, school districts aren't going to have to be paying the costs of those screenings. So, this is an additional allocation for that.
And so, this might be for Dr. Pillage. So, we currently screen second graders, is it?
Dr. Dattery, or Mr. Lamos? Gifted and talented screening, what do we currently do?
We currently screen the second grade. And then, additional screening as students may show, that'd be more, so it's universal, I should say, a second grade.
Right.
And then additionally, as students may show aptitude toward gifted and talented. I don't believe there's another grade we, that we do any universal screening. No.
Thanks.
Is that $1 million for the state or per school district?
It's for the state.
So, we likely will not see that. I would guess those dollars are intended for districts that currently do not have a universal screening process. But we haven't heard much about this, that, these, those two pieces were new in here. There was very little discussion about them, that and the ELL support one.
I will say for the ELL piece, that there is a requirement that all IEP documentation specifically needs to be translated. So, that can be some additional funding. Again, I'm not sure if this district will be kind of seeing any benefit from that, but you know, it's beneficial to students statewide to get their IEP documentation translated if they need it.
I will just add to that, so the estimate that we worked on earlier this year that you all saw, I mean, Megan is within dollars of where the state budget landed.
Of course she is.
You would think the woman has a crystal ball. It's amazing. Nate, now we're looking at it today, I'm like, oh my goodness.
Yeah.
She's like within dollars of being right where the state has us. So, that's good. As you all know, she's out taking some time supporting her husband, who has a significant illness. And so, she's sneaking in time to try to finalize the budget for the year in between visits to her husband in the hospital.
I just have one question, and I'm sorry if I'm not understanding this, because if we're getting a $598 increase, why are we only receiving $215? Am I not clear on those?
Well, so the funding is far more than just per pupil funding. There's other funding streams that come to us.
But it's showing that we're getting less than what the state has. It says base per pupil funding has, is a $598 increase.
And that's where we are really landing. So, it's so complex. But it's a matter of all the other revenue streams, and then when you break it down per pupil, we're right around that $590, $590 something. So, really, that $215 is not, that's a base number. And then, you have the other pieces that go into the finance formula that impact that.
So, just $215 from the state? And then, our other revenue sources bring us up to that $598?
Well, other state revenue and local revenue. So, yes. So, for example, the PPR is one piece, and then you see these other pieces that have come in, like the buy-down on the budget stabilization factor. That gets added to that, I believe. And then, the additional dollars for special education, additional dollars that we may receive for gifted and talented, and as those pieces come into play.
Thank you, Natalie, for helping with the questions. You helped to clarify that for me.
We knew that was going to confuse you, because it confused me. I'm like, wait a minute, Nate. And then, we had to go back through the document to really understand it, because it is confusing that it's really a base per pupil, and then, the actual is closer to that $598.
That makes sense. Thank you.
And I'm sure Ms. Sponsor, if she's watching from home, is kicking and screaming about that.
Oh, yeah. I was looking to see if she sent me any texts, but she hasn't, so she's not watching, I think.
Okay.
Any other questions? Certainly good news. Thank you, Mr. Fall, for both of those, guiding us through the appeals and also the legislative update. Go ahead.
No, I'll let you go. I was moving to the next item, but I'll let you do that, sir.
I was just going to introduce the discuss, we're, the first reading of the JLCDC and JLCDC-R, Medically Necessary Treatment in School Setting. So, Dr. Pillage?
Thank you, President Matthews. And so, we've heard a desire to have a little bit more discussion at work sessions in relation to policy, particularly from Board Member Sullivan. And this is one that really is a heftier policy for us here in the district. And Mr. Fall, and I thought it was worthy of additional discussion here in the work session. Tonight is a first read, so you are not making any, taking any action on this policy tonight, but you would at the next school board meeting.
And I can kind of walk us through this. So, there were some changes to the law, and that was House Bill 221260, which was passed last year. That was called Access to Medically Necessary Services for Students. And this bill requires school districts to adopt a policy that addresses how a student who has a prescription from a qualified healthcare provider for medically necessary treatment to receive such treatment in school as required by applicable federal and state laws. I will say that this bill came out of a need to provide for what's known as applied behavioral analysis therapy for students on the autism spectrum disorder. There were some issues with the school district where a student who had, was diagnosed with autism, they wanted to bring an outside specialist in to provide this ABA therapy, and the school district refused kind of this third party to provide these services because it wasn't in the student's IEP. And so, they passed this law essentially to allow kind of these third-party providers to provide such things like applied behavioral analysis therapy. I'm not sure if Dr. Cambo Spitzey can speak to what ABA therapy is. I'm not really sure.
Mr. Gribble, yeah?
I wish you that that had been part of the document. Like, I was like, what? I was really trying to figure out what they meant. And now that you said ABA, I was like, oh, well, in that context, these documents make perfect sense.
Yeah. And so, we, when I say we, I mean myself and Dr. Dattery, Mr. Tom Gribble, our Director of Special Education, as well as Lori McCarty, who's our Health Services Coordinator, looked through these policies. This is required by law, thanks to House Bill 221260, that we are to adopt a policy addressing medically necessary treatment in school settings. Casby provided a kind of stock policy to this. But then Kaplan and Ernest had also reached out. They had worked on a policy themselves. And we kind of looked at both policies, and we determined that this policy that we had received from Kaplan and Ernest seemed more appropriate, and that we are going to address medically necessary treatment in school settings as applied to a student with a 504 plan or an IEP. So, we'll allow our schools' 504 teams and IEP teams to work with the families if they want to bring in an outside third party to provide medically necessary treatment in our schools. So, if you look at this policy, this is JLCDC. This is what we're coding it for now. We think that it fits nicely kind of here. And again, these are all required by law. We have to define what is medically necessary treatment, and then, who is a private healthcare specialist who can come to school to provide this medically necessary treatment in a school setting. There's a notification of rights. This is required by law, and we have to include this language in our policy, so that's why it's there. And then, there's a determination of whether or not this treatment must be provided on school premises. So, the IEP team or the 504 team will meet with the family and will discuss whether or not it is appropriate to bring an outside specialist to provide this treatment during school hours. So, again, JLCDC, if you go 1, 2, 3, 4, you can see kind of this is the process that we're going to be establishing in terms of how we are going to be determining whether or not it's appropriate to bring an outside individual to be providing the services. There's also kind of access, some access issues. We know with students with IEPs are being provided with special education services. We want to make sure that if any outside third-party provider comes in, that they're not interfering with that student's individual educational plan, individualized education plan. And so, we're also going to give these folks the opportunity to come in and observe and determine whether or not they can be providing this during school hours. There's going to be a whole process for kind of how these folks are coming in, and what time of day they'll come in, how often they'll come in. There's also an appeal process, again, going back to JLCDC. This is also required by law, that if the 504 team or IEP team determines that medically necessary treatment is not appropriate in a school setting, the family will have an opportunity to appeal. And that's what this language is, under appeal, that'd be A through E, pages 2 through 3. And that's the appeal process that we're going to establish for this.
Can you clarify exactly what medical treatments you're speaking of?
So, this is really written with an eye towards ABA therapy, which is, again, it's applied behavioral analysis therapy for students who are diagnosed with autism. And this is kind of an additional therapy or service that students with autism can receive from outside providers. And that's kind of what this law was drafted with an eye towards.
I would just add too, that really, for a couple of decades now, parents of students with IEPs have advocated to have these therapists come into the school during the actual school day, rather than finding a time outside of the school day, you know, in the evening, or pulling their child out of school to go to ABA therapy or other autism-provided therapy providers. And so, I think, you know, this is a win for parents with children who need these supports, because they, you know, then the provider can come right into the school if that's the parent's request, and the IEP team or 504 team determines that's appropriate. They can come in and do that during the regular school time. We do have some ABA folks in the district, correct, Tom?
We have BCBA's who would.
BCBA's. Yeah. What else would you add, Mr. Gribble, that we haven't shared?
On your document, there says notification of rights. Just a verification, it's on the first page, right in the definitions. The public services afford students access to medically necessary treatment required for the student to have meaningful access to benefit from public education. So, it's more than just medically necessary. Well, you need medically necessary order of access and have meaningful participation. So, that definition is really important.
Why is that important, Mr. Gribble? I think I know the answer, but I'd like you to share that.
So, not every medic, not every medical treatment is necessary to have a student access to their school, right? There are some, like the dentist, right? We don't have dentists coming in, like a medical practitioner, right? They don't need that, right? And I'm kind of an extreme example, but not everything that's medically necessary is required for a student to access school. And so, the scope of possibility seems pretty large, but it's really, I don't think it's as large.
Right.
I think Nate did a good job of kind of highlighting really the why behind it.
So, Mr. Gribble, can you give us an example, of course, without disclosing any personal identifying factors, you know, what it might be that an ABA is working with a student on, or working with a school on, to help that student to access his or her education?
So, we may have a student who receives outside ABA services to work on communication skills, behavior needs, things of that nature, and to help support that student in terms, to implement those skills and strategies across multiple environments, not just in a clinical setting, right? To not to work collaboratively with our school staff to say, hey, what are you doing? What are we doing? Let's be on the same page, so we're not working against each other. So, that is, that's an example of what we do currently. And for them to come in and do observations so that they aren't working in isolation. They can see the things that we are working with the student and being successful with it. They can take what we're doing and apply that in a clinic or home setting as well. So, I think this opens doors for us to be more collaborative with community providers, but also sets some limitations around it. Because having outside folks come in, we want to make sure they're maintaining confidentiality. They're working collaboratively. They're working on a schedule and a space that we can all agree on. So, I appreciate the guidance that Kaplan and Ernest provided to kind of shape how we work together.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Gribble. And I will say that that's why it's important that we're going through the 504 and IEP process, because the IEP team could determine that either we can provide such services without this outside support, or that it's not necessary to be happening during school hours. So, you know, we want to go through the process and kind of have some control over kind of when outside providers are coming, especially because we don't want to disrupt kind of the ordinary school process for these students when they're kind of receiving services in our schools. So, I do want to kind of talk about JLCDC-R. That's the accompanying regulation to this policy. And so, there's going to be some, a process here where we're going to develop a written plan alongside with the family if we do determine that medically necessary services are to be used during school hours, and kind of what that plan will include. We'll have a district representative who's going to kind of represent the district and collaborate with students, and the private healthcare specialist in providing these services. We'll have some general supervision of any outside specialists who come to our school. So, they'll need to go through fingerprinting and background checks as we would with any volunteer, just so we can make sure that they can in fact come to our schools. We'll have families sign consent and release for FERPA and HIPAA, so that we can share information with that third-party specialist, and they can share information with us, and we're not kind of violating any of the students' privacy rights when sharing this information. We'll require any outside specialist to cover liability insurance. They're also liable for, they're going to sign an assumption of risk waiver for any services that they are to provide in a school setting. If an incident were to occur, that they are assuming any risk for those services. And then, again, if there's any disruption to the school environment, we want to make sure that we are bringing them in at appropriate times, and it's not interfering with the student's access to special education-related services. We have a right to deny access under certain circumstances, if it's going to interfere with the school's instructional programming. And then, students and parents will have to compensate these outside third parties on their own. This is an additional requirement for schools to pay for these services beyond what's already provided for in the IEP or the 504 plan. And, you know, and last, we can always revoke this privilege if we determine that these healthcare providers demonstrate an inability to responsibly follow the policy or district policies and things of that nature. So, this is just really kind of setting forth the process for how we're going to be bringing these folks in, and whether or not we can allow them to stay. And if there's any changes to the frequency and duration of them coming to school, we're really trying to address that through this regulation here. So, I know that's a lot of information, but again, this is the first reading. So, you know, if you do have any time between now and tonight's board meeting, or you've been up until the next board meeting about any questions or considerations you might have, please let me know. And we can work on making any potential revisions to these policies such that during the second meeting, when the board officially adopts it, that we have kind of everything that meets our district's needs.
Thank you, Mr. Fall. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Finally, tonight, we're completing the work session. So... Finally, tonight, we're completing the work session. So, Dr. Cambo Spitzing, you start us off.
Sure. I think that was a great work session. I know we didn't really comment because it was the first read, but I just want to echo that I do think getting ABA in the schools for our children of autism is definitely a win. And I can see a lot of my parents being very happy about this. Like I said, I wish I would have known that that's what it was talking about. I was, I was a bit like, couldn't figure out why you would ever want a special, a medical specialist in your building, but this makes total sense now. Yeah, I'm glad we got to debrief after the hearing, the appeal process, which was our last meeting, and just to kind of hear where the rest of the board members are on how that went. And I think President Matthews' point of it being a lengthy process last time and hopefully one that we'll fine tune and that won't dominate our business meeting is important point, was an important point to make. Yes?
Mr. Bellamy?
I just think Dr. Dattery and Nathan for everything, you know, they always give us thorough presentations. And the legislative update was nice. It's kind of glad to be passed out for the year. It's been dominating for the last little bit, but just more because I'm not a fan of the process, especially after going down. But they, yeah, glad to see the budget going north a little bit, just for the school districts and the kids.
Ms. Mash?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Fall and Dr. Dattery for all the information. And yeah, always good for us to get to discuss our thoughts on the processes, and I look forward to the business meeting.
Mr. Norwood?
Never ceases to amaze me how many very intelligent people we have working in this district with Dr. Fall and Dr. Dattery, and really appreciate the time, the dedication they put into providing us with this information. And it's nice to see that we're going to get a little bit of surplus funding this year. Or is it next year, '23, '24? So it's good to see.
Ms. Sullivan?
Yeah, I have to agree. I think the best one was the budget. I mean, that's fabulous, the increases that we're getting, but I guess I just don't understand all the money behind it, but thank you for giving me that extra feedback on that to help me understand. The schedule is like intimidating with all of the events coming up. So exciting to see all that happen and take place.
Ms. Bass?
I don't have any additional comments, just appreciation for everyone who presented information to us during the work session.
And I don't have anything else to add either, just thank you for being here, Tommy. Your first time. We appreciate you showing up and dissipating in this way. It's been very valuable to have our students here with us, so thanks for being here.
Do they debrief as well?
Oh, do they do a debrief? Okay.
That's what this was.
Oh, sorry. I thought you were saying, make sure you recognize Tommy.
I'm honored.
Tommy, you can debrief.
Oh, okay. Well, I appreciate everyone. This is my first one. I was very excited to be here. I didn't know what to expect, but I really, I liked it. What I really like is the health providers coming in. Since I work with a lot of people who have disabilities, I get, I got to know more about what they need and I, they kind of need that. From what I've experienced at Central, I feel like some of them would like to, especially parents who actually, some of them don't know languages, also they also, they also depend on our school for the students, their kids' needs. And I think allowing them to come in will actually benefit them and benefit them personally.
Thank you, Tommy. Richard?
For me, I think more of the same of what was said. Really happy to hear that there is more funding coming to schools in Colorado. And yeah, that's for me.
After that, you have any others to go? All right. Work session is adjourned. We'll see you at 6 o'clock for the business meeting.